All right, I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the City Council of Newport Beach for February the 8th, 2011. May we have a roll call, please?
The record will reflect that all members of council are present except for Councilmember Curry, who has an excused absence.
David, do you have a city attorney's report?
I do. I do, Mr. Mayor. The City Council met in closed session to discuss some matters reflected on its open session agenda. Specifically, it took no reportable action as to any item except for two. Number two on the agenda, excuse me, number one on the agenda, Sepeta versus Washington Mutual, the council voted six to zero with Councilmember Curry absent to authorize defense of that matter. In addition, with respect to number five on the closed session agenda, State Farm Insurance versus the City of Newport Beach, the council voted six to zero, again with Councilmember Curry absent, to authorize defense of that matter. There are no other reportable actions taken.
All right, thank you. I would like us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Gardner and stay standing for the Reverend Robert Jordan Ross to do the invocation.
Please begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Book of Proverbs writes concerning those things which will make us truly accountable in our dealings with others. There are six things that the Lord hates, seven that are an abomination to him, haughty eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that shed innocent blood, a heart that devises wicked plans, feet that hurry to run to evil, a lying witness who testifies falsely, and one who sows discord in a family. My child, keep your father's commandment and do not forsake your mother's teaching. Bind them upon your heart always, tie them around your neck. When you walk, they will lead you; when you lie down, they will watch over you; and when you awake, they will talk with you. For the commandment is a lamp, and the teaching a light, and the reproofs of discipline are the way of life. Great God, we pray that you will save your people from a bankrupt failure where honor may be sold for popularity, truth for ratings, and where your gifts to us of this good earth issue not in prosperity for your people but in calamity for most. Do this, we ask, by granting this humble band of citizens and all others charged with maintaining honor and the public trust, all the power, faith, grace, and gifts they may need to perform their task with good will and prudence. We recognize, Lord, that these words of Scripture were written not so much as to give good advice for any one person, but for those of us who were pledged to build and strengthen a covenant community, which gives you honor and which lives as a consequence with prosperity and dignity. For you have taught and we learn every day that no free people and no free economy can long last without trust amongst its people. So build that trust between us and them, O Lord, that these gifts shall be to us and to our posterity forever. Amen.
Thank you very much, Reverend Ross. I believe we have a presentation for this evening?
We do, Mayor. If you'll just give me a second to put the image up on the screen. Mayor and Council, I'm very pleased, again, it seems I get to do this often, to give you money that has come to the city and really here to do the honors, I have Robin Grant, who is the Chair of the Arts Commission. She's the one who's taken the lead. So, Robin, come on up.
Mayor Hen, City Council, I'm Robin Grant. I'm the Chair of the Arts Commission for the City of Newport Beach, and I'm here this evening in order to recommend that the City Council accept a check in the amount of $50,000 from a trust, the Lenahan Trust, and a collection of paintings that were made by Elizabeth Wiltrot Lenahan. You'll see on the screen one of the paintings of this rather large collection. I guess I can open it to questions because I'm not exactly sure how aware you are of the process of what's gone on and where we are in this process.
I just, is that a Rex Brand, of that school? What sort of artists are in the collection?
It is not a Rex Brand, Councilperson Gardner, but you are very savvy in recognizing that Elizabeth Wiltrot Lenahan was a student of Rex Brand. This is sort of an unusual, yes, we should all commend, this is sort of an unusual occurrence. I can give you a little bit of background. This woman, who had passed away quite a while ago, her husband just passed, and that's why we're now getting this donation to the city, was a student of Rex Brand. We have her sketchbook, which is now housed at the Public Library, which evidences her instruction by Rex Brand. And as many people know, he was also the creator of our city seal, which you can see behind Councilwoman Daigle. It's unusual for the Arts Commission to recommend that the city accept such a large collection of paintings. We generally would accept maybe, I mean, I've been on the Arts Commission for six years, we've accepted a handful of paintings, maybe. But interestingly enough, we were, the Arts Commission was able to work with the trustees of the estate in order to create a vehicle for us to accept these paintings, go through the entire collection, choose the ones that we truly do want to keep, maybe a handful, and the remaining collection, we are permitted to sell at a public sale within the city and keep the funds from that sale as well. So this donation of $50,000 will actually grow. The only request by the trust is that we adequately identify the paintings that we keep when we have them on display as being donated by the Lenahans, and the money that we are receiving will also be dedicated to use for arts in the city, not for general purposes, not to go to the general fund, and not to be used for just regular operations.
The public sale, is it actually public? I mean, residents would be able to be noticed and have a chance to bid on work, or?
Luckily for us, there's absolutely no restrictions on the sale, so the plan by the Arts Commission is to, once the city accepts, hopefully this evening, the collection, we will end the check. We will work with the trustees to get the, the paintings are all actually just sitting in a vacant house in, like Harborview Hills. We'll get the collection, house it somewhere in the city. The Arts Commissioners will go through the collection, decide which pieces are worthy of being kept. The remaining pieces, we're permitted to sell at a public auction, sale, however we want to work that. And the question of what happens to the remaining paintings, because they're not all of this caliber, some of them are works in progress, some of them are, you know, maybe not as nice as, not as collectible as others. The final pieces that we have left, we won't be obligated to retain. We will be able to donate those to another organization within the city. For example, we suggested possibly the Oasis, and they could use them in their regular sale, and that would be sort of like the next level. So it's a really very nice request by the Lenahan Trust, and we were really proud to work with them.
And it's my understanding you were very much involved and very responsible in bringing it to the city.
Thank you. I had a village. So, I guess, do I officially offer the check now, or does that happen during the consent calendar? I'm not exactly sure about the process.
I, I think we're happy to take the money now.
Oh, you want a photo? Okay, so I'd invite Mayor Hen down.
And Cynthia, it is very unusual to get a gift with that much flexibility associated with it, and so, to the extent that you had a lot to do with that, you did a very good job. And we are certainly appreciative to the Lenahans over this as well. Thank you. Okay, notice to the public?
The City provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. Speakers must limit comments to five minutes on agenda items. The council has the discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for council announcements or matters which council members would like place on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daigle?
I have none.
Councilmember Selich?
Yeah, I have one thing for, possibly for a future agenda. Every year on Bellbo Island, we spread sand on the beaches in our sand replenishment program. And apparently last summer, a lot of the sand got washed away because it wasn't spread around the beaches properly. And the folks from Bellbo Island were meeting with our Harbor Resources staff, and the staff told them that there wasn't enough money in the budget to actually spread the sand around, just enough to dump it on the beach, is essentially what I'm told. I'm sure it's more complicated than that. But what I'd like to do is, if there's not enough money in the budget, come back with a budget amendment or whatever we need to do to get enough money in there to spread the sand around and so that doesn't get washed away so quickly.
Maybe we could issue rakes to everybody on Bellbo Island and have a sand spinning day?
Have a rake party.
Huh?
Have a rake party.
A rake party, careful.
Councilmember Hill?
No announcements.
And Councilmember Rozansky?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, I'm not quite sure of the procedure here, but at the last meeting of Parks, Beaches and Recreation, there was a proposal by staff to increase the size of the replacement trees. And it was, they were lacking a member, so it was a tie vote, and so it went back to the normal. And I know several council members have expressed interest in bigger trees, and so I'd like this to come to council so we could look at it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, is that it? Okay, I have a few announcements. We did complete the priorities setting session this last Saturday at the Oasis, excuse, yes, the Oasis Center, and it was a very good session, well attended by the public, better than the prior year, at which council concluded in general what are the most important priorities it will focus on, it and staff, for the coming year. Rather than go into detail here, there will be an agenda item at our next council meeting that will lay this out and follow up to the meeting for the public to consider. And it was a very important meeting, and I'm pleased with the results. We, I should also announce that we have the Mayor's Dinner on Friday, February the 11th, this coming Friday, in honor of the past mayors of Newport Beach. It's at the Marriott in Fashion Island, begins at 5:30 with no-host cocktails and then dinner at 7:00. And if you haven't got your ticket, I think it's too late. It is sold out. They are turning away people at this dinner to buy tickets, and so hopefully we'll have a lot of fun and it'll be a very good event. With regard to a few other things that I was involved with in the last week or two, I did do a presentation to the Association of Realtors regarding our Lido Marina Village land use planning. They were very interested in that project, and had a lot of good questions. We did that on February the 3rd. We had a great presentation sponsored by our Arts Commission, the City Arts Commission, at the Public Library. That was on Thursday, February the 1st. Peter Walker, who is the landscape architect for the new Civic Center project, gave a presentation on the subject of landscaping as art, as an art form. It was very informative, and that, too, was a standing-room-only event, and so it was very well-attended. And then on Friday, January the 28th, there was the Boat Parade Awards Dinner, and that, too, was a very well-attended event and a lot of fun. And we gave out the awards for the Ring of Lights winners as well as the Boat Parade winners. That's a benefit for the Chamber of Commerce to go toward the costs of next year's Boat Parade, which is clearly one of the signature events here in Newport Beach. Lastly, I want to note that over the past several sessions of the City Council, a resident by the name of Jim Mosher has raised a number of issues regarding the city's compliance with its charter and its ordinances in various areas. The issues that he has raised have ranged anywhere from importance to things that we don't think he was quite correct on, and things that are technical in nature but probably accurate that need to be fixed, and depending on the eye of the beholder, other things that may or may not be more significant than that. These, we do thank Mr. Mosher for raising these issues for the, to the attention of the city, and I want our residents to know that it is this city's intention at all times to comply with all aspects of its charter and its ordinances. And in relation to the issues that have been raised, we've concluded, and I've asked staff, the city attorney principally, as well as David Kiff, city manager, to conduct a thorough internal review of our city's compliance with its charter and its ordinances to identify any other areas that we may be able to identify in this respect. And in all such cases where we identify an issue or a problem, we will correct our practice, many of which are longstanding practices that perhaps just haven't been scrutinized. And where we can correct them immediately, we will. Where the correction takes further action, we will take further action. But the city will be in compliance, as it should be, with its ordinance and charters. And I would ask, as we do this internal review, that we take this opportunity to further identify any technical requirements or requirements of our charter and ordinance that may not be appropriate today for us to continue with, and that we put together a list along the way here of things that we really ought to stop doing or change the way we do in order to help streamline and reduce the regulatory burden here in the city as well. And so all of that will go forward, and I'm hopeful that we'll have a response from staff here sometime soon. We'll continue to fold in any other input that we get on this subject to make sure it's a comprehensive review. And with that, we'll proceed to the consent calendar.
All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 11 and supplemental item S-13 are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor and state their name and item number. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, do you have anything to pull?
Nothing to pull, Mr. Mayor, but on item number 10, I will be abstaining on that as I have a financial conflict of interest. Part of the project lies within 500 feet of property that I own on the peninsula.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Rozansky?
None, thank you.
And Councilmember Gardner?
Nothing.
And Councilmember Daigle?
None.
And Councilmember Selich?
I have nothing.
And I have nothing. Does any member of the public wish to pull an item on the consent calendar? Please step forward.
WR Dildin, number 6, I'll make it short.
Okay. Item number 6 to be pulled. Are there any other members of the public that wish to pull a consent calendar item? Very good. In that case, may I have a motion?
Yes. I move the approval of items 1 through 11 and 13 with an abstention for Councilman Hill on number 10, with the exception of number 6, which we pulled.
Second. All right, and so now we would like the city clerk to read the title, the number and title of each of the items in the consent calendar.
And if I may just briefly address that, this is one of the issues that we were technically not in compliance with. Our charter does require the reading by title and number of both ordinances and resolutions, and it's been a historic accident by placing these things on the consent agenda that, in fact, what we've done is sort of not complied fully with that aspect. While we've published and presented, and all of these, these matters are on the web fully, we are technically required to read by title and number, and so that's what we'll be doing from this point forward, is reading by title and number in the context of the consent and any other time that you take action. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Ordinance number 2011-6, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending section 17.01.030 of chapter 17.01, section 17.25.010 of chapter 17.25 of title 17, and section 11.20.060 of chapter 11.20 of title 11 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to public pier time limits and rules. Ordinance number 2011-7, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach amending section 6.04.070 and 6.04.240 of chapter 6.04 of title 6 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code pertaining to collection of garbage and recyclables and penalties for violations of chapter 6.04. And resolution number 2011-18, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach adopting a records retention schedule and authorizing destruction of certain city records and rescinding resolution numbers 2003-39 and 2006-104. Now you may vote.
Okay, let's vote. May I suggest?
The motion carries unanimously?
If there's a way for us to shorten our titles, that might be nice. Okay. Items pulled from the consent calendar, I believe, Mr. Dildin, you pulled item number 6. We'd be happy to consider that now.
Good evening, WR Dildin. I almost feel guilty coming up here, but I have a problem that I think I'm going to bring to a halt that is serving the people of the state of California. This may, it'll be 27 years, and it has to do with items of the Public Contract Code. The industry has became a, has an extensive monitoring program with a Newport Beach address, another address that's here in Orange County. I get calls, get emails, whatnot. I bring this item up because I did send off to all of you over the weekend a concern. I received a reply today at 3:42 PM. I was staying home watching your study session to see if anybody had any response to any of my comments. I got this project, or this report, I have read it. I have taught this subject, Public Works Code, in the community college and in private schools, and I'm very, I don't even want to tell you what kind of a grade I would give in this report. I've discussed briefly with the Public Works Director and the city attorney, and I'm going to get back with them on that. Consequently, my only concern here out of this whole thing now is when I appeared before you at the award of the contract where it was mentioned of no subcontractors listed. We have witnessed and have identified two subcontractors on the job. One of them is very legitimate, the other one, when we went to look up his license number, it shows deceased, but I confirmed today that we know who he is, et cetera. Anyway, the reason for bringing this up, this Fair Leading and Subpractices Act is to prevent bid peddling. That was after the bids go out, you don't go out and substitute a contractor because you could get it done for less money. In this particular case, the law says that we, the public, are entitled to 10% of the amount, the portion of work that is allocated for, in this case, demolition and paving. And bring it to your attention, whether it's worth it economically to go after it or not, I don't know. I haven't bothered to figure out because of the way the unit prices that were established. The paving, yes, the demolition, 1,700 bucks, it probably isn't worth staff time to go after the money, but these are things we should be looking at. And I think our inspectors on these works should be monitoring this type of thing as well. And I'd be happy to sit down with anyone in this city and share with them some of my experience. my experience. I feel I'm quite calm tonight. I've just been recently chastised because of a hearing a year ago when I made comments about a city administrator and a city attorney and a public works director that I had to take a refresher course in ethics. And all these things I've been involved in locally, I have tried to keep it away from those that can raise Cain, the press, et cetera. Thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Does staff wish to make any comment in response on that?
I would just, I just learned, yeah, I'm just going to say, I just learned about this today, but that's, so I can't comment on it. I know we mentioned our office, but I just learned about it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, Steve Bait in Public Works. Fong C, our project manager, has been looking over this information, and we're happy to sit down with Mr. Dildane and investigate a little more. The indications that we have from the paperwork that's been submitted by the contractor shows that he's in compliance, however, Mr. Dildane does raise some, you know, some pertinent facts that we probably should look into to see if there's been some, you know, illegal paperwork submitted or fraudulent paperwork, but we'd be happy to sit down with him and look through that, so.
Okay, thank you. Does council have any questions or comments regarding this issue? Seeing none, do I hear a motion?
Move the action.
And a second? All right, please vote.
Motion carries unanimously?
It is time for oral reports from the city council on committee activities. Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, our citizens aviation committee met. There had been a lot of constituent concerns expressed about a departure procedure called, initially called Duke, and then later named Strel, the flights going east of Vegas. And certainly, we realized that in the past, there had been a lot of promises on airport issues to Newport Beach citizens that may not have been kept, but that was long before our time, but still may create issues today. So we're here now in 2010, where everyone is trying to use the modern technologies and to improve the flight, flight activity of safety and fuel efficiency, and as with any technology, they've had to work out a few bugs. And so we really appreciate that this go-around, the FAA twice acknowledged the legitimacy of our concerns and reacted by revising the procedure. The FAA was more than cordial. They revised the procedure twice and validated the new procedure with 36 test flights. The airport was equally helpful, so we found these agencies to be responsive, and I think a lot of the credit goes to the city, too, for our ability to access and advocate within this web of government. And I appreciate the ongoing efforts of our citizens. Sitting on our aviation committee are also councilmembers Selich and Hill, and we're staffed by the city manager with assistance from Tom Edwards for the city's airport consultant. So we believe that we, we've been effective here within the system, and we're looking forward to the, the new procedure flying in March. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Selich?
No reports this evening.
Councilmember Hill?
No reports, thank you.
And councilmember Rosansky?
None, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes, we had a bike committee meeting, and it was standing room only. We're going to have to move to a larger room. We had a great presentation by Charles Gandy, who works for the city of Long Beach, and Long Beach has really taken itself to a new level as far as bicycling. The whole council has gotten very much involved in making the city more bike-friendly, not just for serious cyclists, but for the students, and they've used it as an economic development tool, and we have a lot to learn, and it was just great information. It was a very exciting presentation, and I think we were even more motivated to transform the city of Newport Beach when it comes to cycling.
Thank you, and I have no reports. And so we're on to current business. Do we have a staff report on the quarterly business report?
I have about an eight-minute presentation.
Oh, good.
I'm teasing. Have to ask Mr. Rosansky why. No, Mayor Hen and councilmembers, this is a, the quarterly business report that you, you did see at the goal-setting session, and that copies were available to the public. I just briefly summarize what it is. It's obviously a quarterly effort we'll produce that gives you a snapshot of how our budget's doing, how are the local economies doing in comparison with the regional and national economy, and then the, an update on the goals that, in this case, were adopted in 2010, and then also a number, extensive number of project tracking sheets that will also be on the web that will allow you and the public to better understand exactly where various projects are that you ask, you ask us to follow and implement each year. I'd like to just briefly thank the admin services folks, led by Tracy McCrainer, Rob Houston, and Dana Smith of my office for all the hard work that went into preparing this, and I hope it's useful.
Okay, comments from council? Councilmember Gardner?
I just want to say, this is really well-written. I really appreciate clear writing, and this was well-done. It was not overwritten. The number parts were very understandable for those of us who really don't like to wade through that sort of stuff. Just, I think, very, for the public to read this, is it very simple, and this is what it should be. It's, it uses, it's useful for us as a tool, but also for the public to understand what the city is doing. I also really like the, the updates, again, very quick. I could just go to the end and get a real quick snapshot of an issue, how's it, where's it standing, is it coming back? So, well-done.
Other comments? Councilmember Daigle?
Yes, given that it's a quarterly business report, I was wondering, what is the criteria for a project to be included in the report?
Generally, councilmember Gardner, if, if you folks see it as a project that we need to track, let me know, and the odds are we'll track it. If it's some, a very small little research request, we wouldn't, but I, eventually, within the next iteration, just about everything will be in the report, at least the electronic version. We wanted to just give you the projects we've tracked in writing to date, but everything will be in here within the next version of it, I hope.
That'd be great, because I was just noticing, for example, on our consent calendar, really significant project, we're able to open up San Miguel, which has really been a bottleneck up by the new civic center. We replaced a roof on the lifeguard tower. There's lots of projects happening. We're retrofitting a bridge in Jamboree, and these are all in-the-ground improvements and just a great use of tax dollars and tangible things that our citizens can see, so I'm hoping that there will be a way to report to them, a gathering of that information, that we can really demonstrate to them, you know, the value that's being delivered.
Okay, councilmember Selich?
Yes, thank you. I think it's a good report, good format. One concern that I have is that we've gotten a number of communications on Marina Park, and maybe we can look at somehow in this report getting a better idea to folks on what we're doing, because we've been doing a lot of work on Marina Park, and yet some people seem to think that we're just kind of sitting on our hands on it, and there's actually been, you know, one heck of a lot of work going on. So, I mean, to the degree that we can put those items in this report and not get into some of the more sensitive or confidential issues that we've been dealing with on it, I think we should do it, try and give a better picture of what's going on, because we have been working very hard and actually accomplishing a lot on that project.
Agreed, that's a great suggestion. Thanks.
Councilmember Hill?
I would just like to comment that I've been, since we received this on Saturday, I've been sharing the concept of it with the groups that I've been with, and there's been a tremendous amount of excitement about it and a very positive reaction. One of the items that was mentioned during the Saturday session, which I think would be a very valuable tool, is under the project tracking reports on the table of contents, if that not only identified the project, but gave us a red-yellow-green scale as to the status of those, that would be a quick look-down to see if we wanted to evaluate those that might be in a yellow or red category versus a green.
Can you amplify that a bit as far as what each would mean?
As a management tool, often used, that in a quick review analysis, there'll literally be a scale of a red column, a green column, a yellow column, and you'll fill in the column with green, yellow, or red, as appropriate as to the status of the project, whether it's on track, whether there's an issue with it, that type of thing.
Well, I understand, I'm just not quite sure what red stands for, and what yellow stands for, and what green stands for. Red is in trouble, yellow, watch out, green, oh.
You've got it.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rosansky, did you have any comment here?
No, thank you.
Okay, I had a couple of quick comments. I sure would like to second the positive comments about this report. It's a great opportunity to communicate with our citizens, and it'd be nice to highlight this in the next city manager's letter and really try to generate as much viewership as possible of this document. Quick item, item number seven, having to do the Balboa Village parking lot, just a request that, you know, we've had a lot of feedback that the, the pay station down there just isn't working appropriately, and, and so we really do need to do what we can. I would encourage staff to make some improvements in that situation there, including perhaps a new pay station or a change machine or whatever. Looks like I'm a good straight man.
Good evening, Tracy McCrainer, Administrative Services. We actually were having an issue with that pay station, and we've been working with some of the business community there, and after I checked again last week, I heard that Duncan had fixed that, and it was working appropriately, but I will follow up again. And I heard that we got together with, I believe, two of the various businesses that were having lineups and people late to their classes and things, but I was told that everything was running properly now.
Well, I just attended a Balboa Village bid meeting this morning, at which it was quite the topic of conversation that there are continuing problems, and so if you could have another look at it, I'd appreciate it.
I will.
Apparently, it does not accept dollar bills, and the instructions are confusing, and we probably ought to have two of them instead of just one to eliminate the line. There was a series of issues that were raised, and so if you would have another, another look.
Okay, I will follow up with you on that tomorrow, too.
Katie Bowden was at that meeting this morning, and she can help you with that. Then on item number 11, I note that the Irvine Company is proceeding with a new office building, and that that'll trigger a payment to the city when they pull their permit, just for the benefit of the public. How much money is due the city when that permit is pulled?
13 million.
13 million dollars.
13.5 million.
I, I think we just heard from one of the negotiators of the agreement, it's 13.5 million dollars that will come to the benefit of the city in a single check sometime, we hope, soon. Again, emblematic of the, of the Irvine Companies, certainly their intent to make continuing investment and improvements in that center, and secondly, for the tremendous benefit to the city of the development agreement that was negotiated with them, that money will come in very handy as we start really spending money on the new civic center project. Okay. Let's hear from members of the public. Does anyone from the public have a comment on the quarterly report that we're discussing? Okay, seeing none. All right, so I guess this is a receive and file, so no action is necessary, and we are now up to public comments on non-agenda items, maximum three minutes in length. Do we have anyone that would care to comment on a non-agenda item this evening?
My name is Bob Rush. I am here tonight to make a quick comment on group homes. Over the last three or four years, we've done a lot of work concerning the codes, legal defense, on and on and on, and I've been tracking this closely, as working very closely with the city attorney's office, many of you city councilmen, and the city manager's office as well. Last year, early in the year, I began an informal status report, essentially a scorecard, if you will, of where we had been in bed count, what has been approved or permitted under law through any, one of a number of methods, reasonable accommodation, or hearings, or what have you, and, and then how many beds are actually being filled. It's become apparent to me over the last month that it is, and I, and for this report, I've accessed the city manager's office prior to his becoming the city manager, the assistant city manager's office. So, he's been a great help to me in this regard, but it's become apparent to me that his responsibilities are taking away from that, being able to fulfill that role, and it's become difficult to get this information accurate and complete. During the last month, we've had this issue outstanding, and I'm trying to think of a more constructive way to address this issue. It dawned on me that what we have is a slightly larger issue in tracking our progress with bed count. We have no central board where our community can access to see how many beds a rehab has been permitted, the capacity, let's call it, and how many beds they're operating, actual beds, and that would be determined by reports they submit, audits that are done by our code enforcement, and reports that they submit to planning under hearing requirements. So we have this myriad, we started out with some 20-some-odd possible group home or group home variations, boarding houses and things like that. Now we're down to about a dozen of these things, and we don't have any central board for the communities affected to see whether these things are popping up next to them, whether the ones that are in their neighborhoods that should be at six or 12 beds are actually running more than that. And, and so, as much as I'd like to continue to access Dave Kiff and Dave Hunt, I think it's unfair of me to expect them in real time to get back to us. And I report this status report to some 200 to 300 people, and I do it frequently. I'd like to do it as much as once a month, if I could. I don't know that it's necessary now that we've kind of reached a, a, very far down the road in this, in this process of getting them harnessed. So I think maybe once a quarter would be sufficient, but I do think we should have it on the website, and I think we've got to get it up there soon. So I, I would request the council to consider that immediately. Now, one, let me just finish one last thing. I know Mr. Kiff is busy, and I think that if he doesn't have the ability to do this himself, and I doubt that he does, please delegate this as quickly as possible to somebody that can get back to the community in real time. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Dave, I know you've thought about this. Would you care to respond? It appears to me that you are moving forward with organizing the availability of that information, so.
I did talk with city attorney Hunt and to develop a, a plan at which we would regularly report the known permitted facilities, that would be a public record, that, and the planning department would, would implement that. So that's our, that's our going-forward plan for that, hopefully relatively soon.
Okay.
So you're saying that the kind of information he was asking for, he could go to the planning department and get it from them?
Yes and no. Mr. Rush, respectfully, keeps, is very interested in knowing how many beds are occupied at any one point in time. We don't always know that. There are check-in periods where we, we do know generally the census of, especially the homes where we have a development agreements, but the ones where we don't have development agreements, we have use permits, they're not required to report in the actual number of clients who are sleeping there in any one night, and if that's indeed what Mr. Rush is requesting, we can't deliver that, and we shouldn't deliver that. That's very, it's a little bit over the top in terms of regulation, but we can always offer the amount of permitted beds. That's what we know.
And I took from Mr. Rush's comments that what he's looking for is the latest information that is reportable on that, and so it might be helpful as we're structuring the report to just put the, a little date, last updated, or some such thing for each home, just so that we know the recency of the report, and for some, it may be not available, I suppose, based on your comments, for the actual occupancy. We just need to do what we can do.
Yes, and that's in effect what I did. I, at least, that's my understanding of what I provided to Mr. Rush, was known and approved beds, not who's sleeping, what counts sleeping in them in that particular night, with a date on it.
Yeah, except to the extent that we do have reporting available that would indicate. Yeah, except to the extent that we do have reporting available that would indicate. All right. Okay, any other comments from the public? Seeing none, do I hear any motions for reconsideration? Hearing none, we are adjourned.